All right, good to go. All righty, well, they'll now consider our next docketed item, and I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would read that, please.
Docket PZ 16-005, an application for a waiver to allow residential use in an industrially zoned district for a tract located at 2617 Singleton Lane, LaGrange. The zoning is I-2 heavy industrial.
All right, Ms. Alvey, I guess you're going to present the application?
Yes, I will. Good morning, Amy Alvey. Good morning, Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. This is a request for approval of a waiver of Section 200-020, permitted uses of the Oldham County zoning ordinance. The property is located at 2617 Singleton Lane. It is approximately 1.469 acres and is zoned I-2 heavy industrial. This is an area view of the property. You'll see that this is the existing house here with the existing driveway. And then this is an aerial view of the property. Site history, the primary structure was built on the property in 1989, which totaled 5.648 acres. So this was the original tract. A minor plat was approved and recorded in August of 2001 to create two lots from one. Lot one totaled 3.345 acres and lot two totaled 2.303 acres. On October 28, 2003, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a residential use waiver to construct a home on lot two. This was the minor plat that we just spoke of that created the two lots. Lot two is on your left, the 2.3 acres, and lot one is on your right, which is the 3.3 acres. So again, this is, this gives you just kind of the hierarchy of the division of the land. So the lot on the left, that is what the Planning Commission approved on October 28, 2003 to create or to allow the construction of a residential home in I-2. So what the applicant is asking now, on February 17, 2016, a minor plat was approved to create two lots from one. Tract one is 1.876 acres and retains the original home. Tract two is 1.469 acres and is the tract requesting the residential use waiver. The property is not located in a platted subdivision, so it's considered real property. This is the minor plat that was approved February 17 of 2016, and it shows the existing home, deck, and garage there. And then the area outlined in red, that is the subject tract requesting a residential use waiver. The property is zoned I-2 heavy industrial, which no longer lists single-family residential as a permitted use in Section 200-020 of the zoning ordinance. Prior zoning regulations allowed residential homes in industrial districts, so a waiver was not needed to permit and construct the original primary residence. The applicant acknowledges the area is zoned industrial, but given the existing character of the neighborhood feels a single-family structure is an appropriate use for the lot. This is the current zoning, so it shows everything there in purple is zoned I-2 heavy industrial, and everything that is kind of the light green is AG1 agricultural. This is the future land use map. The darker tan color is, shows that the future use is industrial, and the light yellow shows the future land use map, a single-family subdivision. This is a view looking into the parcel that is requesting the residential use waiver. This is the house on the parent parcel. This is adjoining property owner to the south. This is the view, front, north view on, from Singleton Lane. This is the adjoining property owner to the north. And the adjoining property to the west. And that is all that I have.
All right, Ms. Alvey, any questions for staff on this docket? Yes, sir.
One here, this may not be appropriate for staff, or it may be for applicant. Is the owner of the property applying, or is there real estate, or is there a real estate agent in here?
The owner of the property is listed as the applicant. The owner is here as well as his agent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we will now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of this application. Who would come forward, please? And we'll get you sworn in, and is there anyone else here that, on your behalf, that will be testifying?
Same.
Okay, we'll get you to stand up, and we'll get both of you sworn in at the same time. Ms. Fox?
Please only swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. And I just need your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Embry. I live at 2617 Singleton Lane, LaGrange, Kentucky, 40031.
All righty, you can continue.
The only thing I'm trying to do is just apply for the waiver so they can put a single residence on the property.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to add to that, or? Just get you to come forward, if you would, and just need your name and address for the record, too, please.
Sure. My name's Sam George Greer. My address is 1700 Grand Villa Drive, LaGrange, Kentucky, 40031. I think Amy pretty well covered what we're applying for, but if you guys have any questions, either Doug or myself can answer those for you.
Okay. All right, is that pretty much complete, what you're asking for here?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. I guess we'll open it up for questions now from the commission. Well, is there anyone here that would, that is opposed to this application? Let me ask that. Okay, seeing no one standing up, we will now move into questions from the commission. Do you all have, commissioners have questions? Mr. Horton?
Just, just one out of curiosity. It says here, yeah, the minor plat previously was approved but wasn't yet recorded. Is there any reason that you didn't record the plot?
My understanding, but Amy may answer it better. My understanding, we would do all that at closing because it would cost twice to do it. So instead of doing it and recording it and all that, my understanding, it'd be easier just to do it at closing, do it one time and take care of it all.
Okay. Thank you.
They have one year from the date that it was approved to file it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay. All right, do you have a final statement or anything that you'd like to say?
No, everything's been said.
Okay. All right, thank you all. And with that, docket PZ 16005 is closed. And now I'll ask Mr. Urban or Mr. Carter to just outline what is being requested here.
Pretty straightforward from your application. They're asking to be able to use industrially zoned property for residence. Pretty simple.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No, that covers it.
Okay. All right, with that, the chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ 16005 for, allow for a waiver to, for residential use in industrially zoned district.
Motion, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Horton?
Okay, motion. I make a motion to approve docket PZ 16005. This certainly isn't a detriment to the community, it may well be an improvement. It certainly isn't a precedent, as far as I can determine. I think there are at least five other residences in, on that road, and they may even be contiguous all the way down to the end. So, and it's certainly, as I said, not a detriment to the area, so I make a motion to approve this.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Williams, seconds? Okay. Any discussion now on the motion to approve docket PZ 16005? Sir, Mr. Klingefus?
What do we get into in the future? The adjoining property that remains, that's zoned heavy industrial? We just went through this last month.
Herman, do you want to address that?
That's his question.
I'm not sure what the question is, Bob.
Well, if we get, in the future, when the remaining property, the joining property owner is heavy industrial, correct? So when he goes to develop his property, will he be restricted?
Yeah, again, our current zoning ordinance, as Ms. Alvey stated, doesn't allow the tiered kind of zoning or land uses. Anything around that area, let's just say all of it was sold at one time, and they were going to come in for a subdivision plan, we'd probably make them go through a change in zoning. But we've had a history out there of this industrial zone land not being used for industry. So we have houses as an established pattern. I'm not sure if that...
Well, it just kind of worries me a little bit, because I see what's happened with, I guess it was Fox Run. We have a residential sitting behind industrial property, and then it creates a problem in the future.
Well, again, we are not rezoning the rest of that property. If the owners or fiscal court chooses to try to downzone it or something, that's, that's not what's being considered here.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's surrounded by industrial, and it could be industrially developed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas, did I see your hand?
I was just going to follow up. I guess the applicant, because we're only approving just this small tract and not his original tract of the other, his land that he owns, or he owns the tract one.
Isn't that the one they already got a waiver on?
You are approving the proposed division for this 1.469 to have a home on that, that square there.
Correct, but the other tract where his original house is, is still I-2.
It is still I-2, and it was constructed when the regulation, where we had tiered zoning, and they didn't have to ask for a waiver, because in tiered zoning, you could do anything in I-2, I-1, C-1, 2, 3, in residential uses. So there wasn't an issue at the time that that house was built, because tiered zoning was in place. But there was, when this was divided, tiered zoning had gone away, so that's why residential use waiver was applied for that one. Yeah, so they're, they're asking just for the residential use waiver for this tract, the 1.469 acre tract.
Okay. Anything else? Any additional questions? Ready to vote?
I would suggest the proposed conditions of approval, and we always have the caveat in there that the waiver should only apply to the plan reviewed, and I have a typo in there, March 17, it should be March 22, but Mr. Horton didn't include that in his motion, so I'm not sure if he wants to incorporate that condition of approval.
Mr. Horton, is that okay with your motion?
Yes.
Yes, to include the, all the conditions of approval, as, as they're written.
And who seconded that, Ms. Fox?
I think it was me, that's fine.
Okay, that went okay with you? Okay. All right. We've got a motion on the floor to approve docket PZ 16005 to allow residential use in industrially zoned district. Is seeing no additional hands going up, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would vote, take the vote on this motion to approve.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Mr. Mick Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
All right, the vote to approve docket PZ 16005 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. With that, we all will go ahead, and I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would go ahead and read our next docketed item, please.
Docket PZ 16-006, an application has been filed for a program for signs, Section 290-140 of the Oldham County zoning ordinance, for the property located at 6159 West Highway 146 Crestwood. The property is zoned C-1 Local Business District.
All right, good morning. Brooke Radcliffe. Brooke Veman with Oldham County Planning and Development. The applicant is requesting an approval of a program for signs located at 6159 West Highway 146 in Crestwood in Zone C-1 Commercial Local Business District. You can see the aerial view here, it is located off of West Highway 146, next to the Board of Education and Camden Wood Development here. There's the zoning of the adjacent properties. There's R4 located to the south and commercial, sorry, R4 to the north, commercial to the south. There is C3, C3 to the south, which is a little bit higher density, commercial. Some history on the site, on June 22, 1993, the Planning Commission approved a zoning map amendment from R2 to C1 to allow the construction of a 20,000 square foot office The applicant is requesting a program for signs to include 48 additional square feet of wall signage and a 91 square foot freestanding sign to accommodate the lines that the dealership carries. The property is zoned C-1 Local Business District and contains an Anderson Sales and Service, which is a power equipment dealership. Section 290-100 on-premise signage for C-1 Local Business District states that the maximum area for wall sign shall be one square foot for each lineal foot of building frontage or 50 square feet, whichever is less. The existing 20,000 square foot building has 141.2 feet of frontage on Highway 146. In any other commercial business district, the applicant would be permitted 141 square foot, square feet of building signage. However, because it is located in C-1, they are only permitted 50 square feet. The building is also set back 115 feet from the property line. There is an existing 14 square foot wall sign with Anderson's, Anderson's logo. In addition to the existing wall sign, the applicant is requesting the following wall sign package. You can see those listed there. There are three wall signs they're requesting, two of them being 18 square feet and one of them 12 square feet. So the total proposed wall signage for those three, those three signs is 48 square feet. And then in addition to the existing sign, it will be a total of 64 square feet of wall signage, which is 14 square feet more than what the regulations currently permit for The existing freestanding sign is 24.5 square feet and is set back 20 feet from the property line. This sign will be removed if the following proposed freestanding sign is approved. The proposed freestanding sign height is proposed to be 18 feet on two poles. The sign would be set back 30 feet. There are four sign cabinets proposed, and you'll see a picture of this, so it may make a little bit more sense at that time. The total square footage for that freestanding sign will equal 91 square feet. It will be double-sided, so double-sided, just for the record, would be 182 square feet, and it will be internally illuminated. The proposed freestanding sign meets the height and setback requirements, but exceeds the maximum square footage requirements of C-1 Local Business District. As we stated before, C-1 is, you know, usually for developments that are a little bit less dense, located in a local residential area. If the revised, so if the revised program for sign is, is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain an approved sign permit from Oldham County Planning and Development Services before the signs may be installed. This is just to ensure that what they are permitted to have at the Planning Commission is actually installed at the time that they do go to install the signs. Just for your review, conformance with the zoning ordinance, Section 290-140 Program for Signs states the purpose for this program is a creative incentive for a unified visual statement that integrates the design of signs with the design of the building on which they will be displayed and with the surrounding areas. Standards for approval, the commission may approve a program for signs following notice in the commission hearing if the signs visually represented in the program are consistent with the purpose of this ordinance, compatible with the theme, visual quality, and overall character of the surrounding area, or an area of special character if the signs included in the program for signs are located in such an area, and appropriately related in size, shape, materials, color, illumination, and character to the function and architectural character of the building or premises on which they will be displayed, and are compatible with existing adjacent activities. Display of signs states a premises or occupancy for which a program for signs has been approved by, by the commission may only display signs that comply with the approved program, which shall supersede and replace the regulations for signs in this ordinance. So we'll go ahead and look at the sign package. This is what the applicant has proposed for wall signs. There are three signs that are proposed, two of them will be three by six, one of them might, two by six. And the applicant can confer with, with you all regarding option one and option two. I think they were just trying to decide whether one of these signs is going to be located on the side of the building, or if all three were going to be located on the front. But all you'll be approving today is the square footage of the signs. This is the proposed freestanding sign. There are four cabinets that are proposed. The first cabinet located at the top would be 36 square feet. The next one, 18 square feet with their logo. Almost 18 square feet for the third, and then nearly 19 square feet for the fourth. It will be 18 feet tall and set back 30 feet from Highway 146. Again, this is just an aerial view of the property. Highlighted here in red is where the current sign stands, about 20 feet from the property line. If this program for signs is approved, the applicant will remove that existing freestanding sign, which is just the Anderson's logo, and replace that with a, the proposed freestanding sign, which will be 30 feet set back from the property line. Some photos of the site, this is the existing Andersons located off of Highway 146. You can see they have a pretty large building, so plenty of building frontage. This is the existing freestanding Anderson's sign located 20 feet from West Highway 146. And another view from the Anderson's parking lot, looking on Highway 146. And again, just the aerial view, so you can see where the sign will be, the freestanding sign would be located. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a program for signs at 6159 West Highway 146 in Crestwood. The wall sign package that they are proposing includes the existing building signage, which is their logo sign, which is 14 square feet, and then the proposed building signage, which will total 48 square feet for three signs. So the total building signage would be 64 square feet. They are also proposing a freestanding sign, which will total 91.025 square feet. And that is all that I have. I can take any questions you may have.
Okay. Ms. Veman, thank you. Ms. Crosby, is that your hand up, asking a question? Or staff?
No, I'm going to ask, and maybe I should be asking the applicant also, but I'm going to ask, that sign is already out there. That's going to remain. Am I correct?
The freestanding sign?
Yes.
They will remove the freestanding sign that's currently there.
They're going to remove that one.
If the, if you approve the sign package today, they'll remove that and place a new sign, which will be 10 feet set back further from where that sign is.
Okay. And then, the package, I mean, the signs on the building, there will be three of those on that building.
There will be four total. So right now, there is one, which is this Anderson's sign. If the sign package is approved, they will have four. They'll have the logo, and then they'll have the three lines that the dealership carries.
My question is, why so many signs for one building?
That could be a question for the applicant.
Yeah.
I don't think that this is something that doesn't happen very often, if you think about it. If you have 100, if this was located in Crestwood Station, for example, which is Zone C-3, they are permitted one square foot per linear foot of building frontage. They have, this particular development has 141 square, square feet of building frontage that would be permitted if they were located in C-3. However, they're in C-1, so they're only permitted 50 square feet, which is one reason why they're coming for the program for signs. And you can, you, as long as you stay within that threshold of square footage, you can have as many signs as you want. If I want a sign that's 15 square feet and then a second sign of 45 square feet, I could do that if I wanted to. It just has to meet the, the square footage total, not the number of signs.
Is that all, Ms. Crosby?
Yes, for right now.
Okay, all right. Mr. Horton?
Thank you. Ms. Radcliffe, this may be a typo. On, on the back of the first page, notes on item number six, it said wall sign number one and wall sign number two, A and B, and then at the top of the next page, it's also wall sign A and B. It looks like it's duplicated. Is that correct?
It's just a mistake on the staff report, it was a duplication. So what you see on the screen right now is what they're requesting.
Okay, and the other question, maybe for the applicant. A, B, and C is wall sign one, two, and three, but actually, there are four on the building.
Correct.
On the, four on the application there, so which, which are we looking at? Are we looking for one, two, and three? Or are we looking, are we looking at the drawing which shows four?
There is an existing sign that's already been permitted. So the Anderson's wall sign, which is, I believe, 12 square feet, has already been permitted. It's existing, it's on the building.
So...
So this one is already there currently.
So they're asking for three more.
They're asking for these three signs in addition. So what you would be reviewing are the three signs, but for the record, we just want to make sure we indicate that there is currently a sign there. So all in all, there will be 64 square feet of building signage.
Okay, but doesn't, does not that fourth sign exclude the amount of allowed signs, even though it was, was permitted earlier? Or is that, or is that not included? The way I figured it, it's, it's something like with, the previously permitted sign, is that exempt from the amount of total square footage of signs?
Just think about it this way, if, if for some reason, a new business, or Anderson's come back, comes back and they want to add a different sign, they want to remove one sign, say the Honda sign, which is 18 square feet, and replace it with a different line. This makes it more clear that they can replace it with an 18 square foot sign, that they would have to just meet that 64 square foot number, not the 48 square feet. I just, I think I'm answering the question correctly.
Well, if you look at the total of proposed and existing wall sign, it's 64 square feet. What they're proposing is 48. They got 12. I'm sorry, wrong number.
Yeah, I think you're confusing the point.
They've got, they've got Anderson is already there. The total will be in, they're adding three signs. The total will be 64 square feet.
They currently have 14, which is the Anderson's sign.
Okay, the, if, the total would be 60, I'm looking, I can't find the number again. The total would be 64 square feet, and the regulations call for what?
50.
Oh, for what?
50.
50. Okay, so, so my question is, the one was already been permitted, okay, but this exceeds the number, so are we excluding the one that's already permitted? Because we are now over that.
No, you're doing a whole sign package. You're looking at, you're taking the whole sign, every wall sign that they currently have, plus they're proposing. So you're looking at four total wall signs for a total of 64 square feet.
Which exceeds...
The regulations.
The regulations as they are standing. Yeah, I was trying to determine if the one that's exempted that, that total, but it doesn't. So we're there exceeding the current regulations. Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Dr. Arvin?
Lighting, are these backlit, or are they, how are they lighted?
They're internally lit, and I think the applicant is willing to answer any other questions related to the physical signs themselves.
Okay. Anything else? Any other, yes, ma'am, Ms. Bonet?
It just took me a second. Is the square footage wrong, or just the total wrong? Because 14 plus 48 isn't 64.
Yeah.
I didn't notice that when I went through the packet, so...
But yeah, the math is wrong, 62.
So it's actually 62?
That's correct.
Okay.
Got it.
Good catch, Ms. Bonet. You must have excelled in math in school. Mr. Douglas?
Brooke, just clarification. We're just approving the square footage of the sign, not the names on the sign and all that other stuff.
Correct.
Because they can come in and change the name anytime, and I just think we ought to clarify.
It's just additional information.
It's just the square footage is all we're...
Correct.
All right, any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will now move into the presentation of the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
We'll get both of them sworn in, and then we'll get name and addresses for the record.
Come forward so that they can hear you on the microphone.
Fox, you'll swear them in, please?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And Mr. Emery, are you going to start?
I will.
Okay, we'll get your name and address first, and then when they speak, we'll get their name and addresses.
Steve Emery, 6507 Jack Taylor Place in Westport, Kentucky. That's my home address, and my office address is 105 North First Street, Post Office Box 655, LaGrange, Kentucky. Box six-fifty-five, La Grange, Kentucky.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
And thank you, if I may, uh, one of the things that I think probably I would expect if I were in your chair, and I might be a little confused about, is what are we doing here? Uh, what we're doing here is focusing not on the C-one zoning signage requirement, if you will notice within the presentation, we're looking at instead Section Point One-Four-Zero. This is a program for signs which supersedes what's in the regulations under Point One-Hundred, which applies to C-one zoning. I want you to think about this in a different way as we move forward. What I want you to think about is where other program for signs have been approved within the county. One example is Champion Chevrolet Buick GMC, a program for signage for different dealership marks, different trademarks, different product lines, which exceed what is allowed under C-one zoning. You'll also wanna think of Town and Country Ford, where they have different Ford brands, Ford, Lincoln, Mercury, within a signage program that's gonna be larger than what's permitted under C-one, C-two, C-three. You also have, in Crestwood, just a short distance off the road from this location, Craig and Landry with Dodge, Ram, Chrysler. These are program signage that exceed what's allowed under C-one, but you have to have program justification, and that's why I have my witnesses here to explain program justification, why these types of businesses really rely upon, in order to remain competitive, certain programs that are offered from the dealerships for these different marks. And most of you are familiar with this location, and it have been, has been for quite some time, an outdoor power equipment retail site. And those of us who are older remember when, there was a time when this business operation was in a different location, and was run out of, for lack of a better description, a barn attached to a hardware store. So things have progressed, and we now have some very high-quality product lines that are available at this location, and I'm gonna let these folks tell you why it is that Cub Cadet, Steel, Kubota, Bad Boy, X-Mark, and give me the last one, Honda Power, and Honda Power are important to that business plan and this location, and for its ability to remain competitive. And I also want you to keep in mind, and you have it in your packet, that we are looking at this under Point One-Four-Zero. And I also want you to be aware that in order to meet those criterion, you have to look at this program under those circumstances, recognizing, of course, this backdrop about C-one zoning, but One-Four-Zero supersedes the C-one zoning signage requirements. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to our people, who are gonna explain to you why these product lines and this program for signage is important not only to their business, but also to their competitive strength.
All right, get your name and address first?
I'm Greg Heids, sixty-one fifty-nine West Highway one forty-six, Crestwood, Kentucky, four-zero-zero-one-four, that's our business address.
Okay.
Home address, all right, two thousand and seven Deer Park Circle.
Oh, now, you, they, just the, just the one address is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, essentially with the program of signs, what we've been able to do, the one thing we do not have, and he mentioned to me, I've been, I've been with the company five months, and, and one thing Joshua, the owner, had mentioned to me, is the first time when he came down to actually purchase the company, he passed it up three times. He couldn't find it, number one. One, we share a driveway, and veering off to the right or the left, that sort of thing is a bit, you can see mowers, you can see tractors, every day we pull things out front, every night we bring them back in. Uh, we wanted to be more like the competition we have. Uh, Anderson's is a John Deere dealer in Madison, Indiana, and, and as such, the competition is limited up there compared to what we are down here. This is a second location. The, the second point is the, the type of sign that we have, we're trying to be consistent with the Anderson's brand, so we can continue on. If there's a third, a fourth, a fifth dealership down the road in various communities, you can ride by and see the Anderson's logo with the top brand, the, the Kubota being at the top, for example, is our lead brand. We are considered a Kubota dealer, and we have a, we're granted a territory with each one of these OEMs. The, the six that we have asked about are our top six brands. We have others that we do carry, but these are our top six. With that comes a requirement of signage from the OEMs themselves. Kubota, for example, being the most stringent, the others we could, we can work with, they have turned a blind eye to it, said we don't really, we don't like it, but we'll live with it, that's what they're telling us. Kubota, for example, will not allow us to achieve a certain dealer status, a certificate of excellence. Financially, what that does for us, it takes about five thousand dollars a year out of our pocket, which, you know, if you're looking at about twenty thousand dollars plus that we're spending on a sign, is a pretty good return on investment for us from the standpoint. And, and essentially, all that is, is co-op money, it is increased labor rates that we get on warranty work that we do with them, so we're not actually losing money as a dealership by doing warranty work, which we're required to do, and increased part sales, that's all that amounts to. And that average, average is about five thousand a year, is what that loss is at the moment. It's not a loss, but it's something we could actually realize going forward. Kubota will not bend on that end of it. So what we've done is, with the OEMs, there's an actual program of signs by them, and we have chosen the signs that are the smallest, that we could possibly squeeze in, that they offer, that will fit on a pole or on a wall, that's either a two-by-six or a three-by-six is typically what they have. The Kubota at the top just kinda gives us the shape of what we're looking for from a, a consistency of what our sign looks like in Anderson, Indiana, excuse me, in Madison, Indiana, at, at the Anderson's original location. I guess with that.
And can you talk about the signage on the building, please?
Yes, on the building, uh, again, Kubota, Steel, and Cub Cadet, in that order, are our top three brands, that what we sell. Bad Boy, X-Mark, and Honda Power Equipment are the next three. They're growing, we're growing quite well with Bad Boy Mowers, we're growing very well with X-Mark, that's a very big commercial line for the commercial, and we're making a bu, big push, in fact, we had a seminar last week with the commercial team with X-Mark, uh, and Steel for that matter, a lot of the commercial mowers came in, we gave a seminar with the factory reps in, actually giving them service tips, how to take care of your mower, how to operate sa, more safely, that type of thing. So with that, by going to those signs, we're actually trying to grow those lines as well, especially in this area. And X-Mark is a, is a very good line, they're all very good lines, actually, it's just X-Mark becomes something that, if you're a commercial person, you like, because if you bought it twelve years ago, you can still buy the same parts that you bought twelve years ago, and the price is actually very reasonable, and they're very, very durable pieces of equipment. So, I guess with that, I guess we'll ask questions, or?
Well, we'll get to that here shortly, but is that completes your all's presentation?
I think so, yes.
Very good.
You want me to do anything?
Okay, all right, with that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay, seeing no one, is there anybody here for testimony and questioning opposing the application? Is there anyone here that is opposed to this application? Okay, seeing none, now we'll open it up for questions from the commissioners. Y'all have questions for the applicant? Okay? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Finney, go ahead.
On the, in the presentation, and, and this may just be a, um, I won't say it's an error, but just something drawn, the sign that's gonna be out in front appeared to be positioned, uh, parallel or somewhat parallel with the road. Uh, is it gonna be that way, or is it gonna be actually perpendicular?
We're looking at perpendicular.
Okay.
At the moment, what, what there is, is an island that comes off the front median there, and what we have to do is, there is actually a, uh, there's an in-ground sprinkler system through there, so we're giving ourselves enough setback to make sure we can wiggle this around, so we're not damaging any water lines to keep the grass nice, and, and that sort of thing. Perpendicular is ideal for us, I think that, that probably makes it, well, it's not shining directly out into the road, but it's still easily seen at night, easily seen during the day.
Okay, just, on the, on the, on the presentation, it just appeared to be almost parallel.
I think that was probably operator error on my part, if it was my picture, so I apologize.
Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
It's a big eighteen-foot sign that's gonna be standing outside, is that gonna be lit too?
That will be internally lit, yes ma'am.
Also, all those signs across the front of that building, that's gonna be?
They're internally lit, yes.
Internally lit up also.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
I just have a problem, living in that area, okay? With all of those signs on one, at one place, you've got four across the front of the building, and you've got that great big sign out there, that you can stick all of the same names that you got on the, on the building on that sign, cause nobody else is going to have their signs lit up there. Why do we need so much signage? I can see, I know where to come to. I know where to come to when I wanna buy something, I know that place is there, but we're gonna not bring people from Dixie Highway out here to that, Hurstborn Lane, cause they got enough signs up and down that road too, out here to, to, to look for that. I mean, we can always jump on the computer and put in a name and find out where you're located. Why do we need so many signs for one spot with all of the other businesses in there with signs up? So.
That's a very good question.
It just gets tested to me.
Well, uh, uh, the, probably the largest reason we have this is the OEMs themselves, the Cub Cadets, the Steels, Kubotas, Honda, they all have a program for signs, and, and part of our, it's a contract, you're, as a dealer, you're basically under a one-year contract with, with any of these lines, and, and you have to live up to certain expectations. And we've been able to get by for a while with Cub Cadet, Steel, Honda, and those things. Honda is actually so adamant about signage, they bid on the sign, meaning they wanna pay top money, they will actually give you a sign if you make it in the top and make it bigger than the Kubota sign. That's how adamant they are about their signage and advertising. However, with that said, we'd like to, one, recognize within the realms of our contract, to stay within our agreement, because we are a good dealer. We are, in fact, the only full-service dealer in Oldham County, number one, especially of this size, and we're up against Henry County Supply, Louisville Tractor, there is a place on Preston Highway that we're, the mower shop that we're up against on, on a significant basis, and we do bring a lot of business out from the county. Our, our, our territory and our drawl goes all the way to E-Town, and, and whatnot, and, and helping us, helping people find us, uh, not having, Frank, I don't know if you guys have been out there, when school's in, occasionally we'll get the tractor trailer coming in thinking we're somebody else, we're a feeding seed store down the street, and they'll jack knife in the middle of one forty-six at rush hour, so this way they know not to go there, they can go on down the road a bit as well. Uh, we're a growing business and, and trying to establish ourselves as, you know, as much in the community as possible. Are, are the signs, by our standards, rec, this, all these signs really needed? Yes and no. I think, I think the, the Anderson's sign out front is not quite big enough to be seen from far enough away, you get right up on it, and people stop, and they turn in, I mean, I, I work in, I work in front of the store, I can see, I was going this way, you've got about a four or five second lead to say, yeah, I can turn in, and, and it's okay to do that.
Crosby, anything else, do you have any?
Yes, I do, one more. I agree with you about that sign, but the other thing, and this, I don't know whether you own it or not, but the building down the street from it, um?
Oh, the one, the liquidation place? No, ma'am.
You all in, okay.
No, ma'am, that's not part of this business at all.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Williams, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir, OEM, original equipment?
Original equipment manufacturer, correct.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is that there's certain, for lack of a better term, pressure that's put on you by the OEMs. The others are short lines?
Well, we're a full-line dealer, uh, for all of these guys, essentially, what it boils down to, if you don't live up to these obligations, you know, there's certain covenants in a contract, and you have to live up to them. By living up to these covenants, one, it keeps your territory relatively at ease from a competition, they're not gonna drop somebody on top of, that's, you know, the laws of various states dictate, well, can you be removed?
You're getting, uh, some type of reimbursement now from your OEMs relative to sales and other things that they want you to do, and they, they reward you, uh, for doing those things.
Right.
Now, what I'm hearing is, if this is approved, this enables you to get additional awards from the manufacturers.
Correct.
And, uh, obviously, that's more money in your pocket, and helps you to be more competitive and one thing and another, am I, am I right on this?
It does help, uh, it, it, it also gives us a way to, to compete with the, like, for example, right now Kubota has a massive rebate program going on through the end of March, you know, we're, us being the participating dealer, you can do it. Uh, the one thing about us, if you go to Lowe's and buy a Cub Cadet, you know, you're limited to one model, but you might get a little bit better price than what they can do, we're the only ones that can fix it. We're required to fix it because we are their full-line dealer, we have to be there, we have to be the guys to fix it. In fact, there's, uh, the John Deers, when they started selling those at Lowe's, was it Lowe's? Right? There's a, there's an actual category of customer called Lowe's in our system, and they're strictly people that have problems with the John Deere tractor, or just brought them in for maintenance to the Madison store in Indiana. We would have a similar situation here, you know, Tractor Supply sells Bad Boy, but we sell it the same price, but we're a full-line dealer, they are not. We are full-service, we're full in parts, they're not. So we, we offer advantages by that, with that becomes an additional carrying cost, I just can't bring in a, a unit on floor plan for one year and not have parts, service, and staff, and technicians on hand, there is an overhead cost that goes with that. Those rewards are, come in the form of rebates back to us, hitting certain tiers, you get certain terms, you get certain discounts and, and purchase price, you also get, uh, certain labor rates. For, for example, typically a labor, a labor rate working on a Kubota, if you go into warranty, you typically are, as a dealership, you look at yourself as losing money, maybe breaking even at best, you know, you're there to make a little bit every day. So the point is, is this gets us into the rate of payback for fixing dirt mistakes, essentially, that we can actually, you know, we're not really picking ourselves backwards, cause the last thing we wanna do is drop a line that we really think has potential with, but at this flip side, we have an obligation as a dealer to take a hard look at the business and who is costing us money as a dealership as well.
Big sign out front, that's an OEM requirement, so to speak?
They have a, they have a road sign or a, you could put them all in the building if you want, the problem was, we sit a hundred and twenty feet back from the road, and, you know, you're talking about a three-foot by six-foot sign, it's not very big, I mean, it's big if you're up on it, but if, from the road, it's not that large, really, um, and whatnot, but they all have sign programs, and meaning that you can pick from this set of signs. And we've gone through and, and selected, with the exception of the Anderson's sign, but that's some, that just fits in the poll with everybody else, is all that does.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Horton?
Uh, thank you. Uh, maybe Ms. Alvey or, or, or Mr. Irvin can kinda clarify, maybe bring me up to date, I don't have the program for signs in front of me here. What is the difference, um, essentially applying under program for signs, between following the regulations of the C-four zoning or Section One-Forty, whatever, and the requirements of that, and the other application of program for signs?
I wanna pull that up if we can, so we can be looking at the right language.
Yeah, the, the one sign's about something like three-hundred-and-sixty percent larger than what it would be allowed, and the other one's about like thirty-six, thirty-seven percent larger. So why under program for signs? Because I don't have it in front of me and can't recall it.
And if you will, we've brought up the Section Two-Ninety dash one-four-zero program for signs, and please understand, this is, this is a, a tiering system here too, because first of all, you have to fit the purpose of that section. And in this instance, there is a program for signs that is brought on by the, the manufacturers, that's, in this instance, a creative incentive for a unified visual statement that integrates the design of signs with the design of the building, on which they will be displayed and with the surrounding area. The program for signs that, that fits this type of program is much like the automobile dealership, the power equipment dealership. These situations, you wind up servicing and promoting and stocking different brands. And so, the purpose fits in this instance, this is the kind of program for signage that would fall under Section One-Four-Zero when allowed. The owners of one or more adjacent premises here, the owners of one premises, or one or more occupants of a shopping center, see, this can be done at shopping centers, which it is, just down the street, you'll know they've got a, a program for signs that have different businesses listed on a large sign as well. May submit a program for signs to the commission that need not comply with some or all the requirements of this ordinance, that's looking up to Section One Hundred, the C-one. This, the program for signs shall contain a visual presentation of the lettering, illumination, color, size, height, placement, location, signs proposed for the display, which we have provided for you today. Three, and this is very important, the standards for approval, and these are and, 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 so we have to hit all of these for you. The commission may approve a program for The commission may approve a program for sign following notice and the commission hearing if the signs visually represented in the program are, A, consistent with the purpose of the ordinance. That purpose, you have to go all the way back to the very beginning of the sign ordinance, it's the very first statement. And we can go back to that, I can, I can give that to you if you don't have it in front of you. Uh, and compatible with the theme, visual quality, and overall character of the surrounding area or an area of special character. If the signs included in the program for signs are located in such an area. In this instance, we have a corridor now that is moving it, if you will, in that direction. If you start from Craig and Landreth, their sign program, you have the program for the center where southeast is located. And now we have this signage, quite frankly, this is the smallest of those. But it's, it's in that character. And we've tried to display that for you in a way that you'll understand that this is not more intrusive than it needs to be, but necessary to meet the requirements of those manufacturers. This is appropriately related in size, shape, materials, color, illumination, and character to the function and architectural character of the building or premises on which they will be displayed and are compatible with existing adjacent activities. Now, those logos and those sign programs are the kind that the power equipment company is going to be providing because they meet the character of those particular manufacturers. And they're easily identifiable by color and design to match that product. They, they do fit and are compatible with just existing adjacent activities. The display of signs, a premises or occupancy for which the program for signs has been approved by the commission may only display signs that comply with the approved program, which shall supersede and replace the regulations for signs in this ordinance. Again, this goes back to the, uh, regulations concerning particular zoning locations. This, if you will, is, is an exception to the rule. This is a rule that provides an exception to the rule where there is a program for signs. And my clients have clearly articulated that, that they're, they're feeling the pressure from their suppliers to do this. And they're going to be rewarded for having done so. And quite frankly, it, it puts them then on par with other people that are in the same business with the same type of volume, the same type of quality product that has proven for many years to be necessary for this community. This is an important business in the community. And in order for them to continue to remain viable, which I believe is, is still in the best interest of the community, this program for signs is excellent. It's, it's what's best for them.
Okay, thank you, now I recall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any additional questions for the applicant? All right, seen none, uh, we will now move into final statement of the applicant. Uh, Mr. Emmer, you have any final statement?
Thank you, and I will summarize, we, we've spoken a great deal. I want to let you know that we certainly come with the understanding that we have to be able to articulate the program for signs that is important to this business and how it's compatible with the area. We have to be able to explain to you, and I believe we have, I respectfully submit we have, that we have met the requirements of Section 290-140 and that it is in the best interest of the community and it does meet this particular exception and wouldn't stand out as a favor. It wouldn't stand out as arbitrary or unusual. It's extremely consistent with the regulations that you have in place now and will allow this business, Anderson's, to do well in this location. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll now, as normally do, I'll ask Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline, uh, what's being requested on this docket, please. Mr. Urban? Okay, we're down to, uh, providing the commissioners some outline as to what's being requested on Docket PZ 16006.
Well, as stated in the application, this is a request for a, um, consideration of a program for signs. You've heard all the evidence, there are proposed motion and findings. You do have to procedurally, uh, in your motion, either in, for approval or denial, set out the reasons. There's a page with proposed motions on it, you can fill in the blanks. The proposed binding elements are also in your staff report and there are four of them. Uh, there are no changes to the program for signs without approval by the Olden County Planning Commission. And just for clarification, it doesn't include if they change out a product sign, cause that's, uh, that's allowable under our, our sign regulations. Uh, but just the size. Uh, number two is signage lighting shall be designed to not shine in the eyes of the driver. I'm pretty satisfied that internally lit signs don't do that. Um, number three is any temporary signage must be in compliance with Section 290 and only permitted upon submission and approval of a signed permit. Just wanna make sure they get a permit after this approval, if you so choose to approve it. An approved sign permit from the Olden County Planning Commission, Planning Development Services must be obtained before they're installed. I didn't hear any other, uh, uh, evidence that might suggest other, uh, conditions of approval.
Mr. Carter, anything to, need to add at this point?
Well, it depends on whether or not the way the regulation is written is correct. The way the regulation is written says, when allowed, the owners, not owner, of one or more adjacent premises or one or more occupants. Occupants, not occupant. We have one owner and one occupant. So, I think they need a waiver or variance, but Mr. Urban says that's not the intent of the ordinance.
Right, the way, I, I, I think it could be owner or parentheses owners, I mean, we.
That's just the way it's written, that's the way it was passed.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we, we have.
Technically, they need a variance or a waiver.
And, and the option to the wa, waiver or variance is a program for signs. Uh, if it was one sign and it were, they, uh, were interested in either exceeding the height or the square footage of that, they would go to the Board of Adjustments for a variance. In this case, it's a program for signs.
Right, they can only get a variance on setback and height. They cannot, it says specifically in our sign regulations, you cannot get a variance for square footage. Which puts them into program for signs.
Be a waiver?
Or the program for signs.
Any dimension is a variance. So, the program for signs was put in this regulation in 2007 as an alternative for a package of signs. You've heard a number of these, the, uh, the Baptist Hospital in La Grange had a program for signs. Tri-County Ford had a program for signs. There's another docketed item a, after this one that's a program for signs. This is an opportunity for a business to come in and ask the planning commission for consideration of all of their signs. And that's why, again, it's called a program for signs.
We have done this, uh, on several other instances, you know, here recently or whatever.
I just mentioned the, the hospital, Tri-County Ford.
Right. All right, you first.
You asked me for a legal opinion, that's not legal opinion. You need to change the ordinance if that's where you're, where you're gonna interpret it.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
Mr. Horton?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, um, whether it be singularly or plural here, are we talking about an owner and apply it that way, or owner-owners? And if I hear counsel.
The way it reads, it applies to a, like a strip mall we have in Crestwood, you would have different occupants. And those different occupants, this plan would apply to. Or if you had different owners of condominiums, of office condominiums that need a separate sign, that's what this plan would call for. But here we have one owner and one occupant. So, apparently, this ordinance was not drafted correctly, if that's what it was meant to do.
So, so then what one, what, from a legal standpoint, and what one must do to make certain that we've corrected this?
When we consider the docket item at the end of this agenda today for zoning ordinances, we can include this in, as a revision, even though it hasn't gone through the study review committee. When you have, when you have a shopping center, it's owned by one entity. And the owners are, are not, they don't buy individual stores, they rent individual stores, they're not owners. So, I don't have any problem with the way this is written, we've never had any discussion or concern about whether it's an owner. I, it's, it's meant to be, you know, whether there's one or, and it says one or more, uh, properties.
So, don't worry about it too much until we get an opportunity to change it.
Unless you wanna follow your advice of your attorney, uh, I'm just the planner.
Well, you know, I think we've, at this point or whatever, we have, uh, uh, moved forward on several other of these. And to be consistent, you know, if, if we, if there's an issue down the road, we need to probably look at that as, and change in the ordinance. But I think, you know, right now, you know, what's being requested is perfectly legal, perfectly what they're, you know, requesting is, is according to, you know.
So, we have precedent and the precedent itself might, might indicate that, that.
You know, if we need to, if we need to address that, we can. Yeah, sure.
Okay, that, thank you, that was my only question.
Okay. All right, is there, are we ready for a mo, I'd like to get a motion on the floor and then we could open this up for discussion, for further discussion. But on Docket PZ 16006, a program for signs, uh, at 6159 West Highway 42, the Anderson property. I'm sorry? 146? Yeah, sorry. So, I would, uh, Chair would entertain a motion at this point. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the application as requested. Based on testimony presented, I find no detriment to the public good nor impairment of the basic objectives, the purposes, the intent of the subdivision regulations or, um, uh, impairment of desirable general development of the neighborhood and community as proposed by the comprehensive plan. And I'll bolster that with the commission's tendency to provide approvals on similar requests, specifically those with, uh, that were mentioned, um, in testimony and discussion, including, um, Champion Chevrolet, Craig and Landreth in Crestwood, uh, Crestwood Station, Baptist Health, Tri-County Ford.
Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Well, I suggest you that we go to, there's a proposed, um, motion on page, we're not dealing with a subdivision.
Mm-hmm, right.
Four, says motions. And has motion to approve the program for signs because strict compliance with the regulations will create an undue hardship because of the exceptional, unique top, topographic or natural man-made physical conditions, and B. Both of those would apply.
Right, and the, the selection that I chose was from the bottom of that page.
Oh, bottom, all right, sorry about that.
I, I read part of it.
I didn't read all of it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Ms. Bonet, seconds. All right, now, is there any further discussion on the motion, or any discussion on the motion to approve the program for signs on Docket PZ 16006? Dr. Arvin?
I just wanna point of clarification, it's my understanding what we're considering is the square feet of the signage, not the message. So, if we approve this and, and all of theirs, what was that long word you came up with, Joe, the original equipment people?
The OEMs?
The OEMs, if you change OEMs, that would be up to, they wouldn't be back here.
That's correct. They, they would.
They would come to us and, and if it was the same size and they were just changing out the face, they could do it, right.
All right, uh, Mr. Horton, did you have?
Um, just a question on their, um, the wall sign picture options, option one, option two. Just for clarification, I'm wondering, they are options, so shall we leave it that they have the option to do number one or number two? Or should that, or should they, um, commit or, or agree in the motion to option one or not option two? Just for clarity, or?
Well, they're not asking for any additional square footage of signs and the location on the building, in my opinion, doesn't change really the application much.
So, so they, they need not, it's truly their option, they can do one or two. Or, or do we need to put that in there to have them say which they were gonna do?
I, I think either option accomplishes what they're trying to do and, uh, that, but again, that's up to you, that wasn't clarified in the questioning. And if it's of concern, open the floor back up for public comment and ask them.
Well, and that's not, I, you know, the, the motion that's on the floor, I don't think addressed option one or two. It just was, you know, the square footage that was being requested for the program for signs, I think was, you know, it, I don't wanna put words in your way, Mr. Keen.
I'll, I'll take care of that, I did not intend to impose a restriction on that.
Good, thank you, that's their option. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's fine.
I would like to request that Mr. King include in his motion the proposed binding elements as listed in our packet, there were four. And I seconded, so I approve.
Okay, all right, great. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the program for signs? Dr. Arvin?
One other question, if Anderson sells out to another company, is the program of signs still in place? Would that go with the, the location, not the owner?
It goes with the location. All, again, they would do is be allowed to change out the face plates of the, uh, signs. And that happens on a regular basis.
All right, any, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Urban, you, I think I got that right, when you said all they had to do was change out the sign, but under the program signs, then the theme, theme has to stay within that, so I mean, if another, cause that, basically, it says that in there. Well, like, as part of the approval, it says visual quality, it says compatible with a theme, visual quality, and overall, overall character of the surrounding area. So, I mean, if they sell the property, another place comes in and it's a liquor store. So, I mean, does that change the theme because that's what a program sign is?
Uh, well, you.
We're not approving just signs, we're approving program signs. I, I mean, that's a legal.
I would submit to you that's the reason the regulation reads the way it reads.
That's exactly right, that's, that's, on the legal standpoint, that's why it's.
Okay, well, this, number one binding element says there should be no changes of the program for signs without approval by the Olden County Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, you've covered that.
All right, great. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Fox, would you do the vote on Docket PZ 16006? Docket to approve, uh, program for signs at the Anderson property on 6159 West Highway 146.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
No.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinkus?
Yes.
Mr. Mick Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion to approve the program for signs on Docket PZ 16006 has been approved on a vote of eleven to one. So, looking at the clock here, it's about ten minutes to twelve. And, uh, we will take a recess till approximately one o'clock and start with our next docketed items. And, uh, just ask that, uh, commissioners don't talk to the applicants here at, over the lunch hour. So, we will come back right at one o'clock. Thank you all.